Well, call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. It's Monday, June 13th, 2011. Dr. Richardson. A number of items in the table file.
Yes, we do have a number of items in the table file. And again, as you remember, we only have one board meeting now before July. And so there are a couple of additional items that we've added, again, to be in preparation for some possibilities we hope don't occur but which may occur. The pieces that you're going to find in here is a complete description of the awards for dental and group health renewals. And what you'll see is specific information about our health insurance renewal. And remember, you've already approved us moving to a self-funded plan. Medica will now be the claims administrator for that plan. But the two plans that are going to be involved are identical to the plans that we previously had through Blue Cross, Blue Shield, in terms of the level of the CMM, as well as the one with the health reimbursement account. Dental insurance basically was switched again to self-funded back in '05-'06, and those numbers will stay the same. Basically, the life and long-term disability will also stay the same going forward. On item number four, an addition we will have will be a line of credit agreement with the financial institution. And mainly, what we're working on there is the fact that we have no idea whether the state is going to get through the process of the budget by the end of June. And in that case, we'll be looking at a partial or significant shutdown of the government. And at this point, we do not know if that will also include the freeze in terms of being able to actually pay out any of the, any portion of our district state aid from the state. And so what we want to do is be prepared with a line of credit with a bank in order to make sure that we deal with that. As you may remember, we did that a year ago, thinking that that might be an option. And I think our feeling was just to be on the safe side. We felt we needed to renew it again moving forward in the new fiscal year. We also have final approval in terms of school pictures for the 2011-12 year, with a possibility to extend for three additional years. Please note that under that item, it's B, it's identified as nine, it actually should be item eight, in terms of the school pictures. And again, we're looking at Life Touch Photography as the entity there. And we have a number of additional personnel items as far as appointments increases and decreases. And we also have the end-of-the-year enrollment report. As well as that, then you'll see specific information in your table file in terms of the resolution on the line of credit, as well as specific information about the school picture contract and a copy of the enrollment report for the end of the year.
Okay, thank you very much. There's no objection? We'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We have opportunity now for public comment, and this is a chance for members of the district to address the board. If anybody here wishes to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, May 23rd. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Approved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 23rd, 2011, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. If you care, those minutes are approved. Onto announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson.
Okay, and we have a number of those this evening. First of all, in your packet, you're going to see that there was a handout that was provided by Sibley Elementary, and it basically showcases their service learning projects for 2010-11. Some really interesting pieces to see what the kids have come up with as strategies for, again, helping to support their school and also the surrounding neighborhood in terms of service learning. In front of you, you also have a copy of the excerpt from the 2010 annual report from Torch. And basically Torch was featured as an example of the service that was provided by AmeriCorps program this year. So, again, a very positive set of information about how the Torch program and AmeriCorps has supported Northfield students. We also have some really good news to share. As you know, we have become more and more dependent over the years in terms of potential grants to fund a number of the programs. And would share with you that in terms of the Torch program, we did receive recently a information from the Blandon Foundation that they're going to fully fund Torch for the next two years, and they'll be providing $30,000 per year for a two-year period to fund the Torch program. And again, I think because we've been able to demonstrate the high quality of that program and the impact it has on students and graduation rates. We also have just learned that the Primetime Collaborative has been selected as a recipient for a competitive grant through the Minnesota Office of Justice Program. This is a one-year program and grant which will run from January 1st through December 31st of 2012. It will be providing $161,502 to support free out-of-school time programming for Northfield youth at the Key, at the Middle School Youth Center, the Summer Plus Program, and the School Year Plus Program at all three of our elementary schools. So that will impact approximately 1,000 of our Northfield youth that participate in these programs. Again, the current Primetime grant expires at the end of December, so the timing on this is extremely fortunate because this currys is out now another year into the future. We also would like to congratulate Bridgewater and Sibley Compañera students for their wonderful performance in El Espectacle. Never mind, I'm going to mess it up. Help me.
El Espectacle de Talento.
Oh, that's... Thank you. I was kind of looking for rich Corinthian leather at the end of that. But again, a great program could place on June 2nd at the Northfield Middle School Auditorium. The celebration is the culminating activity for cultural pieces that the students have learned this year. First through fifth grade students perform to a packed house. And again, thank you to all of our Compañera teachers for preparing students for this event. Thank you to the Bridgewater Amity intern Andrea Perez Rojas for all of her work this year. And best of luck, because she returns to Columbia at the end of the year. And finally, to our own Roger Jenny, who was one of seven reviewers for a recently reviewed book on probably one of your most exciting topics, but obviously one that is really exciting to Roger, embedded formative assessment. And so Roger has been identified as someone who, again, this author and other authors around the state are looking at as someone with a high level of skill in terms of understanding of assessment strategies, and being someone that we're very fortunate to have as our assessment coordinator here in Northfield. Okay, and that's all I have for announcements tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else anything to add?
I just want to thank the grant writers and those who are giving those grants to the district. You know, we really do enjoy extraordinary support in terms of grants and other support from the community. And I just don't want to forget to say thank you. We don't take it for granted, even though, you know, everyone is so generous to the district, but we really don't take that support for granted, and we very, very much appreciate that.
Okay. Our first item for discussion is renewal of the operating and capital projects levy.
Well, what I'd like to do this evening is kind of take the first step with you in terms of thinking about the potential for renewal of the two existing levies that we have in the district. If you remember, back in 2006, we approved both an operating levy and a capital projects levy that would go seven years into the future. At that time, what we had promised our community is if the legislature would create a reasonable increase in funding each year over the seven-year period, we would have enough dollars to be able to make sure that we did not make additional cuts in the district for the period of time that those two levies are in place. As you also know, the state at this point has not been able to do that. There've been at least the last three years where no additional funding was provided. And right now, although there were proposals to increase funding for the 2011-12 and 1213 year, those at this point have not materialized because there is no approved budget bill. So, right now, again, we're waiting to see what's going to happen. First of all, let's take a look at where we are financially in 2011-12. And as you think and listen to what we're going to talk about tonight, think about the fact that over the next two months, we're really going to need, as a district, to make some extremely difficult decisions. We're going to need to make a difficult decision about the renewal of the levies that we have in place. And we're going to need to think about what is the level that those levies should be renewed at. And then finally, what strategy will we use in terms of when will we be asking voters to approve those levies? And so, again, this provides that base set of information. What I would like to suggest to the board as we move forward is that we prepare to use a portion of the evening of our next regular board meeting in July as the timeframe for us to come back together to talk about this. Because typically, again, the July board meeting is a fairly short meeting otherwise, and this would give you an opportunity after a few weeks to chew on this, to come back and begin to think about how we would answer those core questions. So, as we take a look at where we are financially right now, basically, we build a budget for 2011-12 based on the worst-case scenario, which was a potential 5% revenue reduction and a 2.45% increase in expenditures. Right now, that was accomplished through the work that we did this winter and early spring with the budget process, where we balanced the budget with a $1.7 million general fund balance reduction and $700,000 in budget reductions. So between the two, the fund balance reduction and the actual budget reductions for next year, we came up with the 2.4 million reduction that we would need to address the fact that we might be looking at a 5% overall reduction in funding. With this particular proposal, we're looking at the district estimated general fund balance would drop from 7.5 to 5.9 million, or 16% fund balance, at the end of 2011-12. Right now, we also know that the state has provided no additional funding in three years. Depending on the outcome of the special session, we may still see a cut in state funding because there really, at this point, is no agreement as to how to move forward. Or, the best-case scenario we see right now is to basically continue the current funding that we have moving forward for the next two years. We know that there are a lot of other things that were tied up in the budget bill and in the policy bills. Again, all of those were vetoed. And so what we don't know coming back is whether there will be a single budget bill, whether there will be any attempt to come back and do any more policy, or when and if, well, we know if will eventually occur, but when, the legislature will be called back into session to try to address those issues. Obviously, that uncertainty in state funding is going to significantly impact our revenue and fund balance, because the longer we go without knowing what the revenue is going to be, the more likely we're going to be looking at having to do some kind of line of credit in short-term borrowing to begin covering our bills as we move forward. And again, although we have been, as we've said to you many, many times, always operating from a position of strength because of the fact that a fund balance is in place, that fund balance can erode very quickly if we move very far into the 2011-12 year without the funding decisions being made and the budget being set at the state level. We also know, and I guess I want to reinforce to you, that basically, all 16 of our employee bargaining groups stepped up during the last round of negotiations. They all agreed to very small settlements, typically about a percent and a quarter per year. And they all agreed to base salary freezes, and they all agreed to step freezes. So really, the only additional costs, for the most part, were in insurance and some dollars in longevity. So where will we be financially as we move out into 2013-14? Well, if we have no additional state funding, then additional budget reductions may be needed to simply maintain fund balance that allows the district to pay bills for up to two months if state delays funding. And again, we have told our community that since 2006, when we passed the operating levy and the capital projects levy, that the 2% was the threshold or the base that we needed to operate from. Obviously, we've already made one cut for this coming year, but we may have to make additional cuts. With the worst-case scenario, which we, again, played out for you with a 5% reduction, the district would need to make cuts and/or reduce the fund balance to balance our 2012-13 general fund budget. And again, the choice could be made either to go below the 16%, or it could be to make, again, significant cuts from our budget. In the best-case scenario for 2013-14, we will have made no revenue, additional revenue, we will not have an additional revenue reduction from the state. Then, the fund balance reductions and the budget reductions we've already made for 2011-12 would not only cover us then through 11-12, but would also provide funds needed to avoid budget cuts for the 2012-2013 year only. So we actually have gained a year before we have to make cuts again. But regardless of the funding received in the next two years, we're going to need to look at additional cuts and fund balance reductions will be needed in the 2013-14 year unless one of two things happens. We get an increase in state aid, or the operating levy is increased beginning in the 2012-2013 year. So again, as we take a look at 2014-15, there are three things that could happen. Existing operating levy and capital projects levies, as you know, expire in June of 2014. If the levies are not renewed by November of 2013, then what we face is a $5.8 million general fund shortfall, and a $750,000 shortfall in the operating capital fund. 5.8 million. Now, think about the worst cuts we've made so far. We've cut about 2.2 million, 2.5 million. Now, looking at 5.8, that cut would be approximately 17% of our general fund budget. And without the $750,000 in operating capital fund, we would reduce the capital fund budget by approximately 37%. So what does that do? It basically triggers massive layoffs, massive cuts in programs. It also cuts back in terms of facilities maintenance and curriculum and technology maintenance and upgrades, which we've tried really hard to work with in order to assure that our buildings and grounds and curriculum and technology are maintained in a way that we'd want them to do, and in a way that I think our community expects from us. Second option, if existing levies are renewed by November of 2013, then basically, the district will continue to make smaller general fund budget cuts as we've previously made for 2012 and 13, again, unless the state makes reasonable increases in state aid. So what we know, again, is if the state doesn't reduce the general fund formula for next year, then we basically will not make cuts for 2012-13, but we will be making cuts for 2013-14. And right now, again, we do not have any idea what the final decision is going to be at the state level. Also, the district, if the $750,000 in capital projects levy remains in place, then we continue to prioritize operating capital fund projects based on funding from that levy. And again, over the course of the last several years, those funds have been used to upgrade technology, to provide the network systems that we need to really support students and technology and learning. They have been in place to help us support repair and upgrades of our buildings, and do a number of things that have really made sure that our buildings are maintained in a high-quality situation. The third option would be if the existing operating levy is renewed and increased to the cap, and the operating capital is renewed by November 2013. In that case, what we do is we extend the time before additional general fund budget cuts need to be made. That length of time would be extended. But that would only occur if we not only renewed the levy but increased it to the cap. And finally, the length of time before cuts need to be made would depend on, again, how many years the state continues without providing additional funding. And so if we're not only at five years, but we're at six years, or seven years, or eight years with no additional funding, then again, the level of cuts and so on are increased. You'll see that you have a document in your materials that basically takes a look at two options. One would be just a renewal at the existing level, and the other one is a renewal to the cap in the fall of 2011. And you can see that it does have some positive impact on when we have to begin cutting again. You notice that if you're just looking at renewing at the existing level, you don't go very far down the road without additional funding at the state level to come right back into a cut mode. And basically, if you move out to the cap, you had about another year. Now, what obviously this chart does not show is it doesn't show it's based on not making any additional cuts, because we wanted to be able to kind of show you what the impact would be. Obviously, in both of those cases, we would never let you go down to the levels that are being shown here without turning around and making significant additional budget reductions. So we can push it out a bit farther down the road, but in the end, the reality is the state has a constitutional responsibility to create a thorough and efficient educational system and to fund it. And at this point, there is not really a sense that there's a need to provide additional funding from the state. So when we think about the possibilities of moving out to the cap level as opposed to just a renewal, a couple things this lets us do. It buys the district time, hopefully, for the state to determine how it's going to respond, because we're still seeing the state really struggling with how it's going to respond to the concept of its constitutional mandate. The increase, however, to the levy would bring us out from our current amount, which is about 1,200, help me Stephanie, 1,286, to about 1,584 per pupil. That would be if we went to the cap. The cost on that would be about $60 per year in additional taxes on home value to $100,000. So again, as you take a look at the impacts, again, the more valuation of your house, the higher level of your property, the higher the additional level of taxes would be based on that particular cap amount. So then I think the board has to wrestle with the question not only of, do we do a levy? How much does it need to be? But also, when you should think about doing that renewal? There's three options, as we see, because this is an operating levy, not a bond issue. It can only occur at the normal time in November. But we can, in fact, run elections in years when there are no state or federal elections. So we actually have three opportunities to look at the passage of these levies or the renewal of these levies. The first one would be to move quickly to look at a possible renewal in November of 2011. What you also have to think about is, when you do that renewal, how many years you're going to renew it for? Because if you do renew it in 2011, you can put in up to 10 years in terms of a renewal. But again, you also have cut off two years you already have approval for. So again, it would take you out eight years from the existing end of your levies. At that point, if you go out in November 2011, are there some positives? Yes, there are. Number one, it's the only item on the ballot, which then means that you don't have the distractions of many candidates and many issues.
Chris, could I just clarify something that you said?
Yes.
That if we were bonding, a bonding could be done at a primary election.
Or even at a, just, I mean, we have three bond issues that just got passed in the last month in three different school districts. A bond issue where you're building can be done in times outside of the normal election times. But by state law, you can only run operating levy elections during the normal cycle.
It has to be done on the first Tuesday in November.
Yes. Thank you. You're welcome. So again, only item on the agenda, basically avoids the noise and distraction of a lot of other candidates and issues, allows the district to provide a clear message in terms of what the issues are. However, it increases election costs, because if you're running an election in a year when somebody else is running election, you basically get the hitchhike on the city, or on the county, or on the state, or on the federal elections. And typically then, as a district, we just pay for a portion of the cost. It also increases the workload, because now there's nobody else to help to run those elections. So we're looking at getting election judges, getting all the materials printed, getting the electronic machines, scanning machines out, getting those checked out, identifying how many polling places you're going to have, all of those kinds of pieces. If that levy would be approved in November 2011, the key thing it will do, obviously, is provide ongoing financial support for student-staff programs and facilities. And again, depending on whether you pass it at the current level or at an increased level, changes the amount of time you have to support before you have to start making cuts again. If it's defeated, the other piece is that you have two more chances to pass it. Okay, in comparison, if we take a look at going out to November 2012, now the levy election becomes one of many items on the ballot. And in many cases, what we do is find those items show up on the backside of the ballot, typically one of the last things listed, which sometimes causes people who already have ballot fatigue from filling out all the front of the ballot and other pieces may not even vote on your particular item. There are potentially, obviously, many distractions as the district tries to share its story. And so when we're trying to tell people, why is this levy important, what's it going to do, at the same time, you have every candidate trying to talk about why they're the right candidate for the job. And we have at least one and possibly two constitutional amendments on the ballot, which are also likely to create a significant amount of publicity and information going forward. Also, again, if you do it in 2012, we significantly reduce election costs, because the city and county will run the elections, and the district only pays a portion of that particular piece. Again, if it's approved, that provides ongoing financial support for us. If it's defeated, we still have one more chance to pass the levies. And finally, if you wait until 2013, November, at that point, again, we're back to only item on the ballot, clear message, increased costs. If it's approved, it does give you the financial support, but if it's defeated, now you have the district in a position wherein we'll have to make 5.8 million dollars in cuts to the general fund between November of 2013 and June 30th of 2014 for the 2014-15 year. You also need to make $750,000 in cuts in the operating capital budget, and you will not have another opportunity to pass that levy until November of 2014. And even if it passes then, the money will not become available until the following school year. So if you get to there, it is a significant impact on the district. So that's the information in terms of the levies. And again, what I would like the board to do is to think very carefully about kind of those questions. First of all, what do you really want to do in terms of a levy? Do you want to look at renewing? Do you want to look at increasing to the cap? And again, looking at... And again, looking at what's there. I suppose the other option would be that you'd say, no, we think it needs to be reduced, in which case you're going to make additional cuts. So the first is decide what should be the amount of the levy going forward. Do you want to continue to do both levies? Again, knowing that if you drop the capital projects levy, you have a significant impact on our ability to maintain the facilities, technology, curriculum, and other infrastructures. The second piece, then, you have to decide, is you are going to need to decide when you want to do this. Do you want to start this fall and look at running the levy in November of 2011 to give yourself the maximum number of chances to get it passed? Do you want to wait and run it for the first time in the middle of a very noisy 2012 presidential election with lots of other pieces going on? Or do you want to take your chances and wait till the last possible year? You could run it in 2013 with the idea that if it does not pass then, you are bound to make all the cuts, and those cuts will be in place for at least a year before you would have any chance of bringing the district back out again. Okay, let me open it up to ask any questions that you might have. But again, what I also want to say to you is, this is not for us to decide tonight. This was food for thought. And then what we want to do is to come back in July and really chew on those questions and see if we can come to some resolution. Now, why is that important? What's important? Because the last possible date which you could make a determination to run an election this fall is that first board meeting in August. And so as a district, we either need to make that decision in July, or we need to make it in August moving forward. And if you do not make that decision in August, you cannot run the election in November of this year. So no pressure, but we need to be thinking about these pieces. We need to be thinking about them very, very seriously because they are going to have a profound impact on this district moving forward. And I think as a board, you have made great efforts over the last seven years, first of all, to address a significant set of cuts that you had to make to get yourself back in line, followed by the hard work of a passage of an operating levy and passage of a capital projects levy. You've maintained and done the path that required you to say to people, I'm sorry, but we can't spend this money to put things back that we cut before. We have to use this money to build the fund balance to protect ourselves. You've seen the ability of the fund balance to actually protect you as we move forward, as you look at districts all around us making severe budget cuts each year for the last several years, and really seeing no end in sight based on state funding. And so, you know, these are going to be some extremely serious discussions to have and an extremely important decision for you to make. Okay, so I will shut up and answer questions.
Okay. Questions? Ellen.
So you had mentioned, Dr. Richardson, that it would cut out the two years if we went for the levy this November. So what that means is that if we were to go for a levy November and it were to pass, it wouldn't start when our current levy expires, but instead would start in the next fiscal year.
Correct. Because what you do is you do what's called renew and replace, or renew and increase. And so at that point, the new levy would start in the fall of 2012. And then you'd count, again, you could count up to 10 years if you would do a 10-year levy. So that would give you 10 years going out. Remember that the current one you have was only passed for seven years. But if you would do your 10 years, you'd actually get eight years beyond the end of the current levy of additional time with that in place.
Jeff, did you have a question?
Yeah, what is the, we have to pay for the expense if it was in '11. So I mean, basically, what's the expense between, well, '11 and '12?
Well, I would say it depends. That's not the answer you wanted to hear. And what the depends is, is it really depends on how many polling places you choose to have and how the election is set up. You know, currently, right now, we run a polling place in every precinct in any of the three counties that has part of our school district. The reality is, in some of the off-year elections, we can have less than 25 people voting in some of those precincts for off-year items. So part of the question that you're going to have to ask yourself is how many polling places you want to have in this election. I've seen districts that have done as few as one or two, and basically just said to people, you need to come to one of those locations. The last time, I think, we did one, Donita, that was in an off-year, what did you tell me? There were, we used how many, 17?
Right.
Out of the, how many that we have total?
Twenty-three.
The 23 possible polling places. What we know is, right now, the city's done an estimate of what it would cost for the city to run
Nine polling.
An election with nine polling places because, you know, that's what they would look at for like the public safety center, or the library, or whatever. And they were saying 20
$15,000.
$15,000, basically, to run that. And what that means is, each polling place typically has eight judges, four-hour blocks at a time that they're responsible, and then, obviously, the setup and the printing of all the ballots, bringing all the machines out, having the county come out and test the machines to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and then, basically, all the count and review of all the ballots afterwards, and bringing all those back then to the central location where they, we finally put together the final tallies. And again, the last time we did this was in 2003, right?
And the main reason why we did the 17 polling places was because the city of Northfield was doing something at that same time. And so the nine precincts within the city of Northfield, we did it jointly.
Yeah. So there was an offset in that election with the fact that the city covered a portion of cost because they had nine, they had their nine precincts. In fact, they had more than nine maybe at that time. Did they collapse a few? Not sure. But anyway, that's really the last thing we can gauge back to in terms of the last election that we ran that was off-cycle.
And in 2003, we, there were about 5,000 people who voted?
Yeah. In comparison, when we voted on the last operating levy and capital projects levy, I believe it was more like 10. So it just about doubled it, and that was in a gubernatorial election year.
Interesting. Any other questions? Julie?
In the history of levies and bonds in Northfield, have we ever hired like a consultant firm prior to formulating a decision to poll sort of a cross-section of the community to get a sense for?
My understanding is the last one that you did that was for the last operating levy. Not the one we just ran, that we ran in 2006, but the one that was run in 2003. At that time, my understanding is that they hired Bill Morris with Decision Resources.
We did.
And basically, what Bill did was to do a survey. And in that survey, they asked a number of questions of potential voters, and they tried to establish what they believed would be the maximum amount of levy that people would consider. We did not end up hiring anybody for the 2006 levy. We just didn't feel we had the money to do it. And we obviously asked for a significantly larger amount than Bill had indicated was the maximum that we would expect in Northfield. But I think, again, what we try to share with people is the reality of the issues we were facing. People had just seen us go through, basically, a $2.5 million cut, and people responded So, you know, I mean, that would be one strategy. I mean, the other strategy, there are folks like Ayers and Springstead and others, they also have bond issue support where they help to actually write the brochure, which, again, the key pieces we need to work on there are, as a school board, as a school district, and especially as for the superintendent or employees of the district, we are limited to providing facts. So what we create is an informational brochure, pretty much says, here's what the district has done, here's what this is going to cost if this happens, and here's what will happen if it passes, and here's what will happen if there's cuts. That last one, basically, Hannah and I basically created it. And again, used materials that had been used here before, plus materials I brought with me when I came to the district. And I think we laid out a pretty solid case for what was there. But typically, that's one of the things that they do. Oftentimes, that type of group also does some kind of survey piece. Bill doesn't do that. Bill only does the survey. He doesn't do any kind of other support. But again, there is a fairly significant cost to getting those services provided. And at that point, we just didn't feel we had the resources to do that.
Anybody else? Questions?
I think the thing to be thinking about, board members, is as we move towards this July meeting where we'll have time for fuller discussion on this, is to be thinking about the kind of information that we want to have as a board to be getting ready to make that decision, so that we can prepare our administrators
Exactly. Okay, because I think the more that you have questions that you need answers for, that you can share them with, Stephanie and I will give us a chance then to prepare information for you that will be ready when you sit down to talk this through. Because, again, you don't take this lightly. This is a very, very important decision as an impact on the district going forward. And I want you to make that decision with every bit of information we can muster. One of the things that we also hope will be, by the time we get to July, fingers and toes crossed, maybe something will have broken in terms of the deadlock that currently exists between the legislature and the governor's office, and hopefully, we have a little better sense of where we're going for this coming year. Without that, you know, this is a real struggle. And at this point, I'm hearing everything from a potential additional reduction, although it might not be 5%. There still could be a reduction, and it looks like if they do that, it might be in across-the-board, everybody takes the same percentage cut, to a scenario that may be more likely, which is they dump everything but the budget bills, and the budget bills are likely to just freeze everything. But the problem is, right now, we can't even get to a freeze budget until there's a sort out of what the actual dollars are and where the dollars are going to come from going Okay? On that pleasant note
We have news, yeah.
Thank you very much. And again, we look forward to working with you on this in July. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. It is frustrating to be, just feel like we're so in the dark, so without any vision of what the future is going to look like. And still, we have to do our best, and we have to make a decision on this. So again, I just reiterate my encouraging of board members to, as you think of things, email Dr. Richardson or give me a call so that we have answers to the kinds of questions that are, you know, you need to noodle on in order to be able to make this decision. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, on we go. Thank you very much. Our first item for individual action is to approve the preliminary 11, 12 budgets for all funds. And these have been presented to us over the last few weeks, months, and so we're now in a position to present them. Stephanie's wonderful book
Is prepared.
Is all of them.
One thing I did want to point out, these are financial summaries of all the information that you've seen over the last few months, as you mentioned. But I did want to call your attention and remind you of a component that was included in the food service budget that was presented to you, which projected revenues with a meal price increase. That is included in the document and detailed out. However, because we weren't bringing that to you separately, I wanted to just make sure you were aware of that. There's also mention of this in the proposed changes for the student handbook pending your approval of that item in the budget. Okay?
So again, the approval of this budget would result in the increase of meal prices by 15 cents per meal and the cost per carton of milk of 5 cents. And again, remember that the driver in this thing is the Child Nutrition Reauthorization Act at the federal level, which is requiring a certain new dollar amount for the cost of lunches in comparison to free and reduced-priced lunches. So we're actually being told by the feds that we have to reduce our regular-price lunches to make sure that there's the right differential between the cost of a free lunch and the cost of a regular-price lunch. I think I said that appropriately.
Increase in the price
An increase in the price of a regular-price lunch and milk to make the right differential between it and a free lunch or free milk.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we have the budgets all in one place. Anybody have any questions? I think we've had opportunity over the last few months to ask Stephanie questions as they've been presented, but Ellen?
I actually don't have a question, but I just, I had said to Dr. Richardson today that I didn't have any questions because you were so thorough going through all the other budgets. So just thank you, and it's really nice to have it then all together at the end to keep. So, thank you.
I agree. This is really nice to review, really easy to look through and go
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I'd ask for a motion to approve the proposed 11, 12 budgets as presented for all funds. So moved. Moved by Ann. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Last chance, questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I propose.
Okay, motion, queries? Thank you, Stephanie. Okay. Next, we have a resolution concerning regulatory relief for America's schools. There seems to be a lot of buzz on this right now. Bipartisan recognition that No Child Left Behind is not working, and also, there seems to be bipartisan recognition that it's a long road towards fixing it and renewing it. And so the National School Board of the Association and the American Association of School Administrators is asking us to pass a resolution supporting regulatory relief from No Child Left Behind. Anything you wanted to add to that?
Simply that, basically, in the materials you have, the first page is basically the information that was sent out from NSBA and AAAS, the two federal organizations concerning this. And then the second item is actually the resolution that we'd be asking you to approve. I think the key piece in this is saying to the federal government that, given that the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind is now three years overdue, and has been identified on a bipartisan level as being flawed and in needs of improvement itself, and the fact that I think, just as we have told them for the last decade, that we will now be approaching 75% to 80% of the schools in the state, or not only in the state, but in our country, will be identified as failing schools, and the reality that we know that just really isn't true, that the suggestion is, while they're getting this thing fixed, that we should look at regulatory relief. And what they're really proposing is the idea that you would freeze things where they are. So that means if you have a school like Greenvale Park that's currently in needs improvement but is not yet in corrective action, that they would be held at the level of needs improvement that they currently are and would operate in that level until, again, the reauthorization of NCLB, or now to be called the Elementary and Secondary Ed Act, as it used to be. And for a building like Bridgewater that might this year go into needs improvement because they already have because they already have had one year of not being able to make adequate yearly progress for every single subgroup, that it would keep them from going into a sanction status for another year. And I think that the belief is that that gives us an opportunity to let the federal government get the work done that they need to get done and to get the ESEA Act reauthorized, and yet doesn't put additional sanctions on schools and school districts based on a plan that everybody agrees is not functioning well. And so, the encouragement would be, they're asking that school boards across the country and superintendents across the country would pass this particular resolution, and then we would carry it forward to the Department of Ed. Where the good thing is, that we're already hearing from the secretary that they are willing to consider making modifications and provide regulatory relief. And so I think this becomes the vehicle to help the secretary do that at this point in time.
Okay. So I'd ask for a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Do we need to roll call on this?
Fosson?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinale?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now I remind you that we have a couple of items in the table file. First, in the memo, the third item for individual action is the award of dental and group health renewals. Dr. Richardson, you want to walk us through that?
Sure. Again, basically, in terms of the health and dental insurance, and again, I want to give kudos to Stephanie and to Matt for all the work that they did with the association and the various employee groups to look at the possibility of moving to a self-funded program. The results of the work that's been done has been to look at moving forward for the coming year, 2011-12, with no increases to any of the costs for health, dental, life, or long-term disability. Further, basically, moving into that self-funded strategy, instead of paying out a monthly bill as we're 1/12 of the total insurance cost for the district, we will only pay the company that will be doing claims administration, in this case, Medica, for the actual cost of claims in each month. And the idea being that if there are months when we do not have the claims at the same level as we would have had in the normal payment, those will go back into our reserve and be used to help build the reserve that we need to have for those months where we may have claims that exceed the normal monthly amount. The two plans that are being provided will be identical to the two plans that we currently have. One will be the 1,000-3,000 CMM, Conferensive Major Medical Plan, at the amounts indicated as far as single and family. And then, the other one will be the 1,500-3,000 CMM with Health Reimbursement Account, the HRA plan. And again, part of the reason that I think we're going to be in the solid position we've been in is that our district's insurance committee, which, again, is made up of administrators, but also members of our teachers' association and other employee groups, have worked very hard over the last few years to move from a program where we had four or five different plans down to a program where we have two plans, and both of those plans have significantly higher initial deductible levels. And so, I think we're positioning ourselves to be in a much better position to move forward without seeing major increases as we move forward. The dental insurance, basically, will continue as it's continued since '05-'06 as a self-funded plan, and we will make no changes in terms of those rates for the 2011-12 year. And our life and long-term disability plans, basically, got a three-year guaranteed life and LTD back in 2010, and those go forward into this next year. So, again, we have those amounts remaining unchanged for both life insurance and for long-term disability. So at this point, you know, we would recommend to the board a motion to approve those new rates moving forward. Of course, the period from September 1, 2011, through August 31, 2012, and to approve Medica as our claims administrator for our self-funded plan for the health program.
Okay. You want to add that to the recommendation? And to approve Medica?
Approve Medica as the claims administrator for the health insurance plan.
Your motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. And then, also in the table file, and there is a resolution on a separate sheet there with respect to a resolution authorizing the district to enter into a line of credit agreement with a financial institution. And, again, this is one of the tools that we may need to utilize in the event there's an option to payments to the district, interruption in the payments that we would otherwise receive from the state, because we're all kind of approaching that no man's land where we don't really know what's going to happen. So you have that resolution in your packet, and I'd ask for a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
I'm going to give it to Ellen. Second by Ann. Okay. Any questions, discussion about the resolution? And then, it's a roll call.
Fosson?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinale?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. There are a number of items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Clarity on the school pictures contract, and then a number of personnel items. Is there anything anybody would like to pull from the consent grouping? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So moved.
Moved by John. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Noel. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, say no. Motion carries.
Okay, items for information. We have the first reading of Board Policy 714 relating to fund balances. And my understanding is that this is a new policy that is essentially our accountants are going to require, or our auditors are going to require us to have in place and we're to comply with GASB 54, is that right? And, actually, it's very helpful to read that and kind of get in your head the different types of funds, because we do talk about those things as we put money in different pots, but this provides more clarity of how those funds are designated in the different fund balances, so. I did have one question, Stephanie. And we're not approving this tonight. This is just, we're going to take it up for action at the next meeting. In Roman 4, which says the district should classify its fund balances, is that something that you will do in accordance with the, you know, is that sort of an administrative function in accordance with the actions that the board has taken?
Some of those categories would be required, much like the reserve designations that the state defines right now on certain funds. Others would be at the board-level decision-making process, much like the designation for OPEB. And then, lastly, the assigned category is something that can be done through a delegation of that authority to either myself or the superintendent. So there's different levels of compliance pertaining to each of those categories.
Okay. So in this initial shift to this policy, is it largely an administrative act to just apply the proper labels to the fund balances in accordance with, you know, past years of board action?
Correct.
Okay, so the board doesn't have to do an additional thing to say, "Oh, that OPEB money, we're now going to label it this," and we have to have a motion. It's not going to be like that.
Correct, no. And what we'll do, because we'll have these in place as we finalize our audit for FY11, we'll kind of provide a reconciliation of, this is what it used to be called, this is what we now have to call it, and the different varying compliance aspects to each of those categories. So we'll have that laid out as we present the financial, audited financial statements to the board, which would be October, November of this year.
Yeah, okay. So, some data on a survey that was done of the many people who participated in the budget teams and the district budget review team, and we thank everybody who took the time to participate in that survey. That's very helpful to the board. So that information is there. And then, we also have in the table file, again, the year-end enrollment report. Did I forget anything? There's a lot in that table file. Okay, future meetings coming up. We've got just the one meeting in July, on Monday, July 11. And again, board members, just to remind you, be thinking hard about issues surrounding the possible renewal of the levy and when we might want to do it, the amount of the levy that we might want to ask for, you know, the kind of the one or two or three-question issue, the length of time that that levy might be for, number of polling places that we may want to run if we're going to do that. Other?
You've hit the key pieces.
Okay, so be noodling on that, and anything else that comes to mind so that we can have, administration may have a chance to get answers to those questions for us, so we can have a real thoughtful discussion on July 11.
It really is when, how much, how many?
Yep.
And when do we start?
Yep, yep, yep. Very, and hopefully, we'll have some clarity from the state by that point. So, hope springs eternal. Okay, so we've got the one meeting in July, unless something dramatic happens and we decide we need another one. And then, our first meeting in August, on August 8. With that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned. Any questions?